I'd like to call the Williamson County Board of Commissioners July 14th to order. First item on our agenda is the invocation and the pledge, the invocation by Commissioner Ricky Jones, the pledge by Commissioner Tommy Little. Please stand.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We thank you, dear Lord, for living in this great country and this great county. We ask that you bless all of our men and women in uniform, and we also thank you, dear Lord, for the opportunity to serve the residents of this great county. Lord, there are many on this commission and those that work in this county that this might be their final meeting, and we thank them for their many years of service, and we ask that you bless them and their next chapters of their lives. Be with us throughout this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have roll call. If you'll push your button and confirm. Record the roll, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four present.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. And copies were mailed to each commissioner. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Little, Commissioner Smith the second. All in favor as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They're passed. Introduction and acceptance of highway commission minutes were also mailed to each member. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Mr. Dwight Jones, Mr. Wilson the second. All in favor as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they are confirmed. Next, we have citizens communication. We do have several people that have signed up to speak. If you'll come forward to the podium and state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes. So, the first one we have is Matt Jablunk. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, but Blanca, maybe? If you'll come forward.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Matt Jablanka. I live at 514 Skyhawk Place in Franklin, and I'm here to speak in support of this proposal to build an enrichment center and a performing arts center in Williamson County. I'm currently the director of Five Point Swing, one of the bands and one of the musical organizations sponsored by the Williamson County Parks and Recreation Department. We have as a mission to preserve and share the music of the big band era, and we've been doing that for several years now. I think this purpose and our mission fits exactly with the mission that I see as part of the construction of this performing arts center and the enrichment center. It's to share the values of Williamson County and to preserve those for future generations. The opportunity to give more people in the community to participate in the performing arts cannot be overestimated. Seeing professionals perform in the area, and we certainly have plenty of opportunity to do that, but seeing your friends and your neighbors performing in a really fine venue like this, and your children, your grandchildren, is a neat opportunity indeed. We have wonderful facilities in Williamson County to enhance our physical well-being. I think it's time to dedicate some of those resources to enhancing our artistic well-being, and this proposal is certainly something that will do that, to give our residents a chance to participate more in music, in the arts, in dancing, and the theater. Nashville may be called Music City, but this is Music County. This is where folks live, and we have so many people with so much talent here, I think just yearning for a place to participate. So, I encourage the county commission to carefully consider this proposal, and if the finances are such that it's okay to approve this proposal. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Stacy Martin.
Hi. My name is Stacy Martin, and I'm a lifelong resident of Williamson County, and most of you know me. I live at 112 Battle Avenue in Franklin. My six-year-old daughter, Miley, is a dancer. Some people are ballplayers, and some people are gymnastics, but my daughter is a dancer. She wakes up every morning asking, "Is today the day I get to dance?" She counts down how many weeks to the recital. Not every sport involves a ball, but they are just as important in keeping the kids active and in the community. She and I love the Parks and Recs dance program. The classes and recitals are fun and a great learning experience. We are very excited about the new performing arts building and what it will offer to the community for the dance programs, a place for them to practice, learn, and grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carson Cook.
Good morning. I'm Carson Cook. I live at 109 Founders Point Boulevard in Franklin. I was asked to speak here today in support of the performing arts facility because I've participated in Parks and Recs Starbright Players for ten years, and I've also taken lots of dance and art classes through Parks and Recs. So, I can say for me personally, Williamson County's art programs have had a huge positive impact on my life, and I believe with this facility, it could have even more of an impact for more children. I think arts education is really important for children because it teaches confidence and creativity and teamwork and makes overall happier, healthier people. And this facility would not only impact individuals, but also create a community where children, seniors, adults can all learn and be creative together. I think Williamson County is already blessed with an incredibly creative community. Pretty much everybody I know does something artistic, whether it's musical or performing or visual, and I think that's one of the things that makes us such a special place to live. I don't know quite why this is. Maybe it's our proximity to Music City, or maybe it's just because we're such a supportive community, full of supportive families. But I believe whatever the reason, we have a duty to continue to foster this, which is why I fully support the Arts and Enrichment Facility and encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Darrell Waltrip.
Good morning, everyone. Darrell Waltrip, I live at 110 Deerfield Court, Franklin, Tennessee. Been a longtime resident of Franklin, love this city, love this county, and it's been very good to me. I'm speaking on behalf mainly of my daughter, Sarah, and Sarah was in Starbright, and so I got to go to a lot of plays. As a matter of fact, believe it or not, I was in a play, The Music Man. And I only had one line, and had to work really hard at that. But anyway, Sarah, I went to these plays, and they were at the middle school, and they were at the high school, and the whole time we were having -- and if you wanted to bring your whole family, you wanted to bring a lot of family members, there weren't enough tickets. The theaters weren't big enough, and so you couldn't bring everybody to the play that you would like to see your daughter perform in. And so, Stevie and I always have thought, why do we not have a performing arts center in Williamson County? We really, it was something that we really hoped someday we'd have an opportunity to stand before you folks and say, this is something that's very important, not only to our community, but to our kids. When you talk about the development of our children, we saw Sarah, Sarah thought she was going to move to New York and go to NYU and be an actress. I mean, that's how, that's how much influence Starbright and Ms. Millstead and Lori, everybody at the Parks and Recreation Center, that's the kind of influence that they had on young Sarah's life. So, it's important to our community, it's important to our children. I think it's a great addition to what you're doing at BGA already, and I think it fits right in, perfect timing, and we have, these kids will tell you, in this county, there's more talent. I don't know, if you go to church, when you go to church on Sunday morning, anybody almost in the congregation can stand up and play the piano, play the guitar, and sing. It's just amazing, the talent that's in our county and in our community, and they need a place to showcase that, and that's really what, that's what this performing arts center would do for the kids in our community. So, I think it's a great project. I think it certainly needs your consideration, and I hope you'll approve, approve the proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom Trabucco.
Got it.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Tom Trabucco, and I live at 704 Brittany Court. My family moved here to Williamson County about ten years ago from upstate New York, and my kids almost immediately got involved in theater. And going back to 2005, when they started with Starbright, my kids have been in almost twenty shows. I've got three children, the oldest is now twenty, and the youngest is sixteen, and this program has probably kept my son out of juvie. But in addition to that, it has, it has just enriched their lives so much. Music is still just a huge part of their lives going forward. My daughter's now a sophomore at Alabama, and she's minoring in theater, and this program has just been a blessing. And my relatives who come in from out of town, when we can get them a seat, their mouths drop open at the amount of talent that we have, and things that we wouldn't have been able to do in New York, believe it or not, kind of the theater capital of the world. This county is so rich with people who care and people who are willing to kind of lay it on the line for our kids. And these shows are big shows. There's a hundred kids in any given between crew and cast, and really, relationships are formed that last a lifetime. My daughter's best friend is Sarah Waltrip, and they did not go to school together. They met at Starbright. And I was in the show with Darrell, and he did, he had one line written, but he actually added a few, so. I just, I would love to be able to have a place for probably now my grandchildren. It'll probably be too late for my sixteen-year-old, but we intend to stay here and support the arts, and it would just be a great place to be able to go see my grandchildren perform. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes citizens communication, so now we'll move on to communications and messages. We have three late-file resolutions, Resolution 71444. If there's no objections, we'll hear that under other, and it's on the agenda. Also, late-file Resolutions 71445 and 46. If there's no objections, we will hear those, and they will be at the end of appropriations. So, any objections to those?
Forty-five went out in the packet, forty-six is on their desk.
Yep. Resolution 71446 is on your desk. The others went out in your packet. So, are we good there? So, we will hear those at the appropriate times. Also, I'd like to thank Sheriff Long, Randy Purcell, and Bob Moran for being here. I see Dusty Rhodes over there also. Thank you all for here. Also, I saw Charles Sargent. Charles, thank you for being here. Another message we have, on August the 12th at 5:30, we've got training for some new commissioners and some of the old commissioners, and at that time, you can also be sworn in if you prefer. If not, you can get with someone to do that. You may want your own ceremony with family and friends, and so, need to get that worked out through the mayor's office. And also, there's a C-Task event in Murfreesboro Monday, August 25th through Thursday, August 28th. In check with the mayor's office, you'd need to register for that if you're interested in that. Also, today, we'll conclude about 11:30 and go to the Ag Center for lunch. All commissioners need to meet at the front for our annual commission photograph, so any questions on that? Also, there's a conflict of interest statement. Is that in your packet?
Yes, sir.
In your packet? We need to sign those, and we'll pass them around and give them to Jeff Wigby.
Jeff, do you have that? They were in the commission packet.
Yeah.
We need a couple more copies. Diane, we still need a couple more copies.
Okay. I'll have to go get some copies. I need them spelled out.
All right. While she's doing that, another important announcement I have, today is Commissioner Jeff Ford's birthday, so I appreciate him allowing us to spend the day with him, so we'll --
He's all coming to my party. I never knew about that.
I know, I know he's thrilled, so.
Nowhere I'd rather be.
There you go. And I believe that's it for communications and messages. We'll get some copies for that before we vote on the budget, so we're working on that now. Moving on, next we have --
Mr. Chairman, if I might, while we're in communications and messages and talking about the agenda, I'd like to make a motion that we defer until our September meeting the following resolutions, 26, 27, 29, and 30. While you're looking for those, that's the public safety projects, the Parks and Rec park projects, and the two bond issues.
Commissioner Ryan was the second.
We need to do that now, or when do we get to?
I was just looking at it. We can do them on each individual one if you'd like. I was looking at it as a agenda cleanup issue more than anything.
26, 27, 29, and 30?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't know any reason you couldn't do it right now.
Okay. All right. We have a proper motion second.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I might explain my reasoning behind that. These, this does not speak to the worthiness of these projects or the need of these projects. What it speaks to is the fact that we have a new commission coming on in September that is going to be responsible for raising the funds to pay for these particular projects and making sure that the citizens who voted are representative, making sure that the, that these projects are properly funded and properly paid for. So, they're going to be tasked in the next, and there's sixteen at least of us here, or sixteen of us who will still be on there. We're going to, with that group, be tasked to prioritizing everything else that comes forward in the next, in the next year and looking at how to pay for these. Because these projects not only will require approval, but they require that we find the funds to pay for them, and the bond issues will require more, an extra million dollars in the next budget year that's not in our budget. We have other projects that may come before us, and I'd like to give that commission the respect of being able to take a look and prioritize these projects in amongst everything else that's going on. So, that's the reason for my request for a deferral.
Okay. Commissioner Little?
Yes. Every one of these projects has gone through the complete budget process. This is our budget meeting, and I would like to ask that you please vote to continue these. We have gone through the complete budget process. They have passed all of the committee and budget committee hearings.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Danner?
Yes, I'd like to, just in support of Commissioner Ford's effort, you know, I wrote an open letter that the Williamson Herald was kind enough to print, and I just want to share with you all that, no surprise, I got overwhelming response that we should have a better prioritization system and that they don't want to see all of these projects stacked into one year that will almost surely force us to make a tax increase decision this time next year. And so, I think it's the prudent thing to do, it's the right thing to do for the taxpayers and to defer at least one of these until next year so that we can get a feel for what we need. The state requires that we fund schools, public safety, and infrastructure. They don't require that we fund all of these projects that are on this list all in one year. And again, to Commissioner Ford's comments, it's not about the worthiness of any of these projects. They're fantastic, they're all wonderful. It's about the role of local government, and it's about timing, timing and price tag. Can we afford this? I've had no assurance personally that we can afford them all in this year without a tax increase. The right thing to do is to defer at least one of these.
Commissioner Langston?
I would disagree. I have served on this commission. While all of these projects have been developed and been in the work and in progress, I deserve the right, as do other commissioners, to vote for these projects as they began during our term. If it raises taxes, I don't want that, but neither do I want a scare tactic that will keep us from preventing, or prevent us from passing these resolutions.
Commissioner Barwell?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like some clarification. Is this 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30, or just is 28, 27, or 28 is a?
27, 29, and 30. As I understand, 28, Commissioner Barwell?
Well, that's to put a notification in the paper that we will be at some point issuing those bonds, and I think that process can go ahead and start. That does not commit us to going ahead and borrowing that money. That starts the public comment process, so that's why I excluded that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Langston. We have vetted each one of these things over and over again. We've been building towards some of them for, before some of these commissioners that voted for, voted against it over and over and over and over and over, and just want another chance to vote against it. And I think it's had, it's had its day in court, it's had its day with this body. The community wants it, and the mayor has assured us over and over again that we're financially sound. The people that buy our bonds have assured us that we're financially sound. All the fear the sky's falling is for a purpose to make some people look good, and the sky's not falling. Williamson County is healthy. Williamson County people wants these things, and I encourage you to move forward with them. Thank you.
Commissioner Shalafant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I go along with Commissioner Hancock and Commissioner Little. This has all been through the process. We've all voted on, as far as each of the committees, respective committees are concerned. They have, they have been passed in the committees. I see no reason to delay this at all. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for Ms. Graham. Nina, to Commissioner Hancock's comment that we can afford this, if all of these were passed, could we pay it without a tax increase?
All the projections that we've been looking at, next year is looking good. We've had growth in our property tax this year, about 3.6 percent. We've had continued growth in our privilege taxes. If we're continuing to use those towards the payment of debt, next year is looking promising. That's nothing that I can promise you. It depends on how the revenues continue to come in over the coming year. We're still looking at a six, seven-year plateau that we're in as far as paying our debt, but for the next budget year, it is looking promising right now.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Commissioner Hayes?
We have prided ourselves on quality of life issues in this community, and I give credit to the commission past and present, and the leadership past and present, for the many things that we have here to be grateful for. When people look to come to this area, they look at education, they look at Parks and Rec, they look at safety, and they look at other things to increase the quality of life. Our enrichment programs provide incentives and provide quality activities that offer opportunities for people to grow and to learn, to stay well and healthy, and to have activity that hopefully will keep them out of some of the juvenile problems. Our Parks and Rec is one of the best programs that we can have to give children something to do. They have to have things to do to stay positive and make great contributions. As Doug says, his Parks and Rec is for every person in the county, one person at a time, regardless of age. Just go and see the senior citizens who now have a reason to get up and go somewhere. They're not at the medical center, they're at the senior citizen center. Look at the people who are going to the Parks and Rec and being active. If you'd seen our senior citizen Olympics not long ago, we had ninety-year-old plus participating. That's Parks and Rec. Look at our health programs. Look at our best health program advocates with our medical centers. People move here for our health care, for our quality of life. We helped develop that. We have done our homework. It's been through every single committee. There is no reason to wait. I am casting my vote not to defer, but for these projects because I am voting for my constituency who needs this, who want this, and who have the quality of life issues to have a great life here in our county. They helped build this county, and they certainly need to be able to live here and enjoy it, and I hope you will do likewise. Vote your conscience, but vote for the right thing to do, and that is not to defer, in my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner Hester?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the privilege this year of serving on public service and law enforcement, and I can tell you that on Resolution 26, that we thoroughly vetted this situation. I have spent many hours studying public safety, and this is, I believe that this is a vital part of us moving forward in public safety to serve all of the constituents of my, certainly my area and in South Williamson County. I also have been many times to the senior service, senior citizen groups. They need some updating, they need some parking, and our senior citizens have served our community. We spend a lot of money on schools, but the senior citizens have built our community, and they deserve our respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a point, Commissioner Hancock, we'll get to you. You've already spoken to it, so.
I just wanted to respond to it.
Oh, okay. All right. I will get to you. Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Call the question.
Second. Proper motion and second? All in favor of calling the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Ready to vote? If you're in favor of deferring Resolutions 26, 27, 29, and 30, press your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm.
Can we state the question then?
The motion to defer Resolution 26, 27, 29, and 30. If you're in favor of deferral, push your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Five yes, nineteen no.
The resolution, the motion fails. So, moving on to county office reports, we'll first hear from County Mayor Rogers Anderson. So moving on to county office reports, we'll first hear from County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
If I could, have Nina come back up and kind of give us a snapshot. She will be up here quite a bit and a few amendments going through all this. But Nina, if you want to kind of touch on some of the things, and I'll reserve a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Sure.
At the conclusion of her remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Several items in your packet this month. I'm not sure what order yours is in, so I may go a little bit out of order. The first one that we have this month is for the Cool Springs Conference Center for the May report. The county did have to pay $1,0286.56 for the month of May. I didn't have their June report in for this packet information, so I'll have that to you in September. Also, in your budget packet reports, or the monthly budget reports, we have the report for the month of May and also the report for the month of June. Your June report has the county funds as the schools are still working on their closeout. You'll see that all of our funds closed strong for the end of the fiscal year. Also, in your packet, you have your budget history summary that we like to show to you each year. It has the years from 1987 down to our current projected budget of our total expenditures for the year. Our upcoming budget that we're proposing is $440 million, with 65 percent of that being schools and 34 percent being all your other funds. Also, in your packets, you have your privileged tax reports for the month of May and the month of June. Your June report, we collected $1.2 million. You also notice on the June report, this is the end of our fiscal year, the recreation portion did close in arrears. We're seeing on average about $50,000 a month coming in on that. Got a couple appropriations for recreation privileged tax. Those monies would not be expended until these arrears are made up and the funds are Also, you have a privileged tax history report. This is something that we give you at the end of each year that just shows the history of the privileged tax collections since inception. So that last page there, you'll see in the adequate facilities tax, we've collected $30.7 million. In the schools, $99 million. Parks, $9.6 million. Fire, $1 million. And highway fund, $7 million. Also, in your packet, we have a report that shows you the Williamson County adequate schools privileged tax. This is the appropriations of that tax. If you go back to page three, it shows the totals, which I find kind of interesting, of the total collections of $30 million. The cities have received $9.2 million of that, and Franklin Special School District, $2.1 million of that. Also, in your packet this month, you have a refunding plan. One of the resolutions is to refund the $2,700,000 bond issue. It's Resolution 7431. We had that in our refunding plan last year, but the savings did not come to fruition. So that is something that we would like to look at again this year. In the refunding plan, we're looking at savings of a little over $1 million. It would not extend the life of the bond. If there's not at least a savings of 3 percent, we would not move forward with this refunding plan as well, and it would be sold at a competitive sale. And you also have a copy of the debt management policy. Williamson County as part is a three-star county. There is a requirement that we provide a copy of this to you at least annually, and also in the September meeting, you'll, I'll provide some more information to you. That's a requirement of the three-star program. Couple of other reports, and then I'll be through. Also included this time, a copy of the current property tax spreadsheet. This is what I use to estimate our revenues. You hear us talk about a per penny rate and what that generates. That is shown in this column under tax generated, one cent of tax. And it also shows that we've grown 3.6 percent over the previous year in our property tax, and our assessment is $8.8 billion. Also have provided for you a budget summary of our fund balances for the year. We have our estimated beginning fund balances in the first column there for each of the funds. These are true estimations for the schools, says they've not completely closed out yet for a total of $101 million in our ending fund balances for the year. That concludes my reports. If anyone has any questions.
Commissioner Danner, a question?
Yes, thank you, Nina. If you could just give us a snapshot of what our current credit card debt number is, our total debt that we have today, what we're going to put on there today if all these resolutions pass, and then what you see coming in the next year. I know that we've only got kind of half of the $80 million Nolan'sville Campus project, and so we know the other half, the other 40 million is going to come probably in the fall or within the next 12 months. And so I think where some of us are just sort of struggling, and I don't think we're trying to say that the sky is falling, but we're trying to understand how, last time we got pushed into this corner of a tax increase vote, we were only shy $10 million. So it's easily could be seen as the value of one of these projects, and we were nowhere near $600 million in debt. And this, it looks like it's going to push us over that. So I think that's where the nervousness is coming in, and we just want to, it was very reassuring to hear you say you thought that we were in good shape and that we could afford all of this. That was surprising to me. So if you can just tell us what we have today, that number of debt, what we're going to add on to after this meeting or through the course of this meeting, and what you think is coming next year.
Okay. I have that in another folder if I can get that real quick. Okay, our current outstanding debt as of the close of this fiscal year is $514,150,000. The proposals would add $59.6 million to that. That would bring us up to $573 million. That is our total debt, but when we look at the debt, we take out what the hospitals and the partnership that we have with the cities, how they pay us back. So our net county debt with the addition of those would be $521,665,000.
And then what do you know for next year?
For next year, as I said earlier, what we're looking at is we would still just continue to analyze our property taxes. One thing that I can tell you is our assessed values are continuing to grow. Our tax base is continuing to grow. Statistically, the county is very sound, and everything that Moody's looks at in analyzing the county, all those numbers are very good numbers.
And Nina, it's, I don't think there's any question of soundness, financially soundness. I'm sorry that there might have been some confusion in that some of us were questioning the soundness. It's a question of affordability. It's a question of how much, you know, can we afford to buy next year without a tax increase? That's the simple question. And so as far as what bond projects are coming next year, we know 40 million is coming. And so do you know of anything else? Because that pushes us over in trying to compare the situation in 2010, 11 with this situation, it would be the 573 number that we were with last year or last time. And so this 40 million with the schools pushes us over the 600 million mark. Do you know of anything else in addition to that 40 million that is going to be requested?
I'm not aware of anything else at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you, Nina.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I want to take this opportunity, it's a good time to do it, to thank the accounting department and the mayor for the leadership that's transpired through the last eight or nine, 10 years. Fact of the matter, if we were not a conservative physical body, this board that's all, that's crying so much about a tax increase, had we not been very conservative in our approach to budgeting, you would have already had a tax increase when the economy went south. This commission had planned for years and years and years. It's not something that we ride in on a white horse and save the day because this commission has been conservative for years. The gentleman that sat right beside me for years was the most conservative budget chairman that I have ever seen, as ever been in anybody that governing body of this country, and he, he did a great job, and this commission's done a great job. I've now put my faith in the same people that's been helping us vet these issues and plan these issues, that look at these numbers every day, not every meeting, but every day. They have, they have given us good numbers over and over and over and over. And I don't know where someone got the idea that this body wasn't physically conservative and responsible because you can look at the tax rate and tell it is. So I just want to thank you and the staff for continuing to help us move along. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
And I've got another question for Nina, if you don't mind. With, with the potential new debt being added, taking us to 573, what is our budget projection for this coming year for principal reduction?
I don't have that in front of me. It's in your, it's the amount in our budget book that's proposed for those funds this year. I think it was a little over $30 million in the general debt service fund and $20 million in the rural debt service fund. And those are the principal and interest payments for the upcoming year. We, I did kind of look through our schedules as far as, I just want there to be an understanding of making principal payments versus paying debt off. To me, those are two different things. As if you have your home mortgage, you're going to make your payments each year, but then when you pay it off, you pay it off and no longer owe that. So we are making our principal payments each year. This past year, we did actually pay one bond off, the 2004A, so that will actually come off our schedule. For next year, we'll have three bonds that actually come off the schedule. So we are making strides each year that we do make. We are funded to make our principal payments and our interest payments, as well as we are paying off some debt along the way as well.
So would you say that with the, the net debt projection that you gave us of 521, with the projected principal reductions through payments on the bonds during the year, that would take our net total debt down below 500?
No, that does take those payments into consideration. So it would be... Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, it would.
Okay. So our total owed would?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I just wanted to, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Hancock. I can applaud, and I know we can go all day long, and we don't, I don't need to say any, anything else, but I appreciate everything that everyone's done, and actually, I think we've gone above board to go to every department, to do all the things, and every, I can't thank everybody enough. And I've been here 12 years, and I have, I can truly say that we have conservatively done a budget that has been fantastic, and we exceed and are complimented for what we do. We've had an amazing amount of growth during all this time, and I thank you so much for all you've done.
Commissioner Little?
My question's already been asked and answered.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Nina, just for clarification on my part, we're paying off roughly 50 million in principal?
Principal and interest.
And interest. So we'll be taking that off the books, right?
Right.
Okay.
And I did look at that. For the following year, that would bring us around to about 539 for Mr. Smith's question.
Thank you. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Kestner?
Yeah, just one comment and one question. When I go back and look at our budget for the preceding 12 years, it looks like it's doubled. So that's about, if you follow the rule of 72, that's about a 6 percent per year annual rate of increase over the preceding 12 years. I do think we have a conservative posture and outlook, and I applaud that. I appreciate all the work that Mayor and staff and Nina have done. I do have a question. Do we have a long-term financial model or some sort of five-year financial projection of the county's finances going out? Or do we kind of go this year by year?
Let her get to her other folder.
Apologize. And I would also suggest that if we face a property tax increase at some point in the future, and I suspect we will, I think that will be driven by all the incoming residential development because anybody who thinks residential development pays its own way hasn't sat down with a calculator for very long and looked at that.
Yes, we do have schedules projected out for the life of the bond, so we do have those anticipated for each year, what the payments would be.
But do we have an overall model of the county's revenues and expenses and borrowings and principal payoffs that goes out for five years by any chance? That includes the schools and also all of the other expenditures?
I do have those in, I do have those internally.
And they're all kind of in one model, so it's a consolidated projection, if you will, or financial projection?
They are. They're my internal worksheets, but I do have those projections.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Commissioners, last comments lead me to make a few remarks. First of all, I'm going to say thanks to the Chairman Committee and Tommy Little for chairing it through, championing it through. You're going to be voting on a budget that you all have talked about today of $440 million plus. And as Commissioner Kestner has so apropos, that's an interesting observation to look at a 6 percent growth. I need to remind everyone, too, that this isn't the county, that sheet that you have that goes back to 1987, I know this is probably self-serving, but that's something that I started because that's when I actually got involved in politics. So you can track my old history and climate from 1986 to where we are today, and it is an amazing figure to me. Then in 1987, we had $40 million, and this year we've got $440. Then in 1987, we had $40 million, and this year, we've got 440. That's 400 million more. I have not put on there the numbers of growth in our community, and I appreciate you saying that about our growth. There are some things I do want to point out in looking at the sheet that Nina and her staff, and they've worked very tirelessly to get you a lot of these reports over the weekend, as have many of the other staff members. She made reference to the sheet that's kind of estimates property taxes and what a penny does, and you heard her say that. I'd ask you to go look at this sheet. Let me point out a few things to you. And if you look at the budget history that the county's had over the last certainly 20 years, you can see that we've worked very energetically to shift some of the costs from 6535 to reach that number, to try to get there, because I feel like that's a good safe number for us from a history level. We've been as high as in the schools would get 50, and the county was in the 41, 42, but we're clearly in the 6535. But what the sheet doesn't tell you is that none of us in private business or have been in private business understand the operational side of way the government works. That's just the way the law is, and that's what we have to live with. But then embedded in that 34.76 or 35%, we're paying the debt on the school, and that's because you all vote on that. And many of you understand that. That's not the way we run our businesses, and that's certainly not the way we run our homes. But embedded in that 35% is a number that Nina and all of us have to pay for all of the school projects. And when you take out the other projects out, that number becomes 7327. So your government, and there was a report put out that Commissioner Barnwell made reference to a couple of months ago about an organization that said, "Where's a good place to live? Where do you get the best buying for your buck?" And I think the name of that was Smart Asset, if I remember correctly. And I have to be careful when I say that. But they literally pointed out, "Where's the best place to live in the state of Tennessee?" And you know what? They chose Williamson County. That report said Williamson County, "You get the best bang for your butt." In fact, we're the only county in the state. And I kind of like the dialogue. Oh, it kind of upsets your stomach a little bit, whether we're doing it right or wrong. But I know one thing, we're doing something right. A lot of folks are moving here. And yes, it's important that we all understand we have to pay our notes, and we better budget for it. But we're AAA. The cities are AAA. And a lot of folks outside this area recognize this community as being a solid place to live and work and play and go to church and make investments. The interesting number on here, this is almost mind-boggling. When you look at the county assessment breakdown, county assessment breakdown is if I owned a $400,000 house, you take 25% of that home, that's $100,000, and you pay the taxes in the unincorporated area, $2.31. Look at the county assessment, countywide. Nina made reference to it, 8.897, almost 8.9 billion dollars. Well, that number in itself doesn't tell you a lot, but I know many of you have heard the story how we have almost doubled in assessed value in the last 10 years. But from this time last year to today, one-year snapshot, we grew $300 million in assessed values. $300 million in assessed values. Our overall growth was 3.64, countywide. There's a lot on the books that Brad Coleman and his people haven't got to yet. One of the things I think that's going to challenge all of us as we go down the road with, and schools are going to continue to come. We're going to build two of them in Williamson County, out in Nolansville community, which you look at that assessment sheet, kind of tells us where the growth's occurring. Just look at what Nolansville is up to versus Fairview, Thompson Station, Spring Hill. You kind of take a look at that, tell you where the growth is occurring also. But the real challenge is going to be, over the next 20 years, when the population doubles, and I was talking with Darrell Waltrip before he went up, I mean, that's a blessing and a curse. Businesses like that. He likes to sell automobiles. Our shops, our growth. But at the same time, we've got a lot of issues that we've got to deal with internally, working with our cities, and part of that is transportation. I'm not lecturing to you, I'm just telling you, the transportation is a major issue in our community. And how are we going to deal with that? We've got some ideas. We hope, we thank those commissioners that are rolling off for your many years of service, and I would concur with John, and I have served with John and Judy, and some of these have been around a long time, and so I'll take some privileges to say thank you for your service and being down in here fighting it out. It is an excellent place to live, and I know the next group of county commissioners are going to come on, they're going to have their agendas, but we and their plans, we'll work through these, and we encourage them to get very knowledgeable, get in with us, try to figure it out, to continue to make this a place to live. I think there are other things on the horizon, Commissioner, that we're going to have to address. Our court system, our legal system, our animal control system. I can name several of those that are going to come up over the next few years that we're going to have to figure out a way, either recreate financing, move dollars around like we've done, or the one thing that nobody wants to talk about is raising taxes. We do have a very good, comfortable tax rate. Our fund balances grew this last year. And it's going to be a challenge. And I don't question we'll meet the challenge to all of you. I don't question that we've got one of the best school systems in the state, and it will continue to get better. But it'll become, we need to have this kind of dialogue. We need to remember, though, that we're all on the same team, and I concur. And I want to say thanks to all of you that have disagreed with me, that are leaving, that have worked with me and worked out the issues. I have utmost respect for each and every one of you. We've lost some good ones along the way, and we're losing a bunch this time. And so to those people that are leaving, I'm going to take some liberties here, Jack. We're going to do it at lunch, too.
Okay.
But I want to say, would you stand up and let us applaud you because we owe you a great deal, too? John, Judy, come on. One's good. Ms. Chairman, that's all I've got. I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for the mayor? I see none. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Dr. Mike Looney.
Thank you. Good morning. Good to see everybody. We, too, would like to thank those commissioners that will be leaving their seats at the end of this meeting. Thank you for your support of public schools and the work that you've done. For those of you that remain, we continue to look forward to working with you as the future unfolds. School is right around the corner. August 1st is the first day back for teachers, which is just a little bit, about three weeks away, and August 8th is the first day for students. All is going well, as far as I know. I flew back in last night at about 11 o'clock, so there was no burning paperwork on my desk this morning, so I think things are in good shape. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Tanner?
Hi, Dr. Looney. Just along the lines with the fiscal picture here, what bond borrowing types of projects do you see proposing to your board in the next 12 months to come to us? And what's the amount, do you roughly think?
Ms. Tanner, I don't know that I could just off the top of my head come up with a number, but I can kind of give you an idea of the types of projects. First, you are going to be considering a $4 million capital budget for us upcoming year, and we had requested 13, so we have that deficit of maintenance items just to keep the systems going and the school system that we'll have to address. We have been, for the last year, looking for a property in Spring Hill to build another elementary school. And so, you know, it could be that we are successful, and we already have the funding for that property. So it could be that we are able to identify that property within the next 12 months and then want to begin working with the county commission and the school board to move forward on construction of a new elementary school campus. As you know, Spring Hill is a fast-growing community as well. Those schools are filling up very quickly, particularly at the elementary level. And then, to be honest with you, I don't think this is going to happen within the next 12 months, but further out than that, we continue to have congestion in the Brentwood area, specifically the central Brentwood area and the northwest Brentwood area. Scales Elementary School is, I honestly can't tell you where all those families are coming from. It's mind-boggling.
And then you've also got the remainder of the Nolansville project.
Yes, ma'am. I don't know, you know, we've used 40 million as the estimate. To be honest with you, I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to come and ask for less than that. But 40 million is the number that we're operating on. And so my commitment to the commission at a previous meeting was that we would not ask for more than 80 million, and I feel very comfortable that we'll come in below that.
Okay. So we've got, and the estimate for Spring Hill Elementary, roughly 25?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Smith?
No, on another subject, not for the schools.
Oh, okay. Any other questions for Dr.? Okay. Commissioner Bane?
How are you doing?
I'm doing well, sir.
I haven't heard a number since the original vote was taken on the auditorium at Brentwood. I think back then, we were talking about it may be finished in October. Is that too rosy, a look at that?
Yes, sir. I do not believe we'll be finished by this October. We have, you know, we've had some severe weather, parking, we had to get the timing down about students and stuff. That project is underway.
Yeah.
I can come back at the next commission meeting and give you a better outlook of the project completion date.
Yeah, I just knew we talked about October, and I didn't see how we could do it, but...
Well, I'm an eternal optimist, and I've learned to bite my tongue a little bit more. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Ryan? Dr. Looney?
Yes, Dr. Looney, just one more.
I thought you were going to answer for me. That would be great. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Dr. Looney, I was going to, just, this is really more of a comment than it is anything else, and it's in regard to the funding that we have in front of us today for the schools. I'm personally very proud of the fact of what the job that this commission has done, if I may pat ourselves on the back, and the job that the mayor has done. And I want to make sure that it's entered within the record that the schools have the highest percentage of our overall budget since 1987. I know that there's been quite a bit of talk with the school board, that there's some frustration, that there has not been enough funding for requested projects. But I would ask that you take back to your board that I do believe that this is a well-funded budget for the schools, and the fact that this commission and the mayor's office does have other departments that we have to fund as well. And so I just wanted that in for the record. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Herbert?
Hi, Dr. Looney.
Good morning.
I think I talked to you about this earlier, and I was just checking on the status of that small project at Page High about the football field and also the concession bathroom facilities. What's the status of it beginning?
If, I have to get some support up here. Jason, come on up. Like I said, I just got off the mountain, and so I'm still a little bit lightheaded from the altitude. Why don't you answer that?
Sure. We're in the process, oh, there you are, a different perspective. We're in the process of getting the drawings for it, and then the next step is to finish up some estimates before we can then set it out for bid. I will tell you, in that particular project, we discovered that to extend the practice football field is going to take probably some blasting because of the rock there. If you're familiar with the south side of that practice field, to make it a full 100-yard field, and so we're a little concerned about the numbers right now. I don't have a good date to give you, but I will email you a date that we anticipate we'll be able to put it out to bid.
Okay. I had spoken with athletic director there, and also the concession area. I mean, he even stated that it could work even if it were smaller. So I wish y'all could meet with him, and maybe he can work with even the field being smaller.
Okay.
And just work with him, and maybe that would cut some of the costs.
All right.
Because I've got another school that needs a little work. Maybe we could help them out.
Okay, thank you.
We may have to raise those TVs for Mr. Goode.
Commissioner Little? All right. I don't see any other questions. Thank you, Dr. Looney. Steve, you've got a comment?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just want to take a moment to, as Chairman of the Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, want to thank Commissioner Hayes, Commissioner Green for serving on our board. They will be continuing. Commissioner Beathard is joining our board this month. But I'm pleased to announce, as you know, we were in a search for a new president, CEO, and this coming Monday, Ellie Westman Chin will be starting her position. That'll be her first day on the job, and we're very excited. She's got tremendous experience here in the southeast, including Nashville, and we think we truly hit a home run there. So wanted to keep y'all advised, we will, in the next several weeks, we'll be having a reception for her so that each of you can have a chance to come out and meet her. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Little?
Yes, as Chairman of the Budget Committee, I wanted to make a few comments and thank a bunch of people. I would like to thank the mayor's office, the mayor's staff, the department heads, the school board, the Dr. Looney and his staff for bringing us a budget within guidelines and does not call for a tax increase. Without the cooperation of all the departments and staff, we couldn't have done this. Some things to point out about this budget. Of the 440,951,983, the school portion was pointed out as 65.22% or an increase of $14,675,666 over last year's approved budget. Overall, the budget is up $6,101,577. So that's a 2.46 increase for schools, but a 1.7 increase overall. And again, we couldn't have met these numbers without the cooperation of the school board, of the central office staff, of the county mayor's office, and all the department heads, and the rest of the budget committee would like to thank them for their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Little. Job well done. Next, we'd like to hear from Doug Hood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to give you a little update about Nolansville Rec Center, the progress. As you all would know, we've had a couple of delays, and we're probably looking at the end of October, first part of November now. So we've had a lot of comment about wondering when it was going to open, and the delays were believing, and I, we had to bring rock to Nolansville. Can you believe that? So, and we brought a lot of it. It had to do with the parking lot and making sure the PSI tests were correct and all that, and we've certainly taken care of that. And I want to personally thank the Highway Department, Eddie Hood, and Greg and their staffs for helping us. They once again stepped up to the plate for us, and we're very grateful for that. But believe me, we'll get it open as soon as we can, and we're looking forward to doing that. But I did want to give you an update.
Thank you.
You certainly can, sir.
No, I know there's going to be outdoor swimming. Will there be an indoor pool that people can use this winter?
No, sir. There will not be an indoor pool in Nolansville, but there is areas which we created... There will not be an indoor pool in Nolansville, but there is areas which we created out there for expansion. In the back right-hand corner, if you're familiar with the old Nolansville site, you'll be able to put an outdoor, an indoor pool out there and connect to the facility, and also a second gym, you know, in, whenever the Commission decides to do that at some time. But there is the availability to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Doug. Any other reports? I see none, ready to move on. Next, we have under Elections and Appointments. Wastewater Authority, the law representative, five-year term expiring July 2019, term expiring, Rick Berger, nomination, Rick Berger. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Wilson? Commissioner Hayes II. Any other nominations? All in favor of Rick Berger, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And he's confirmed. Next, we have the Medical Examiner, two-year term expiring July 2016, term expiring Samuel Smith, M.D., nomination, Samuel Smith, M.D. Entertain a motion. Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Green II. Anybody else want that job? All in favor of Dr. Samuel Smith, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And he is confirmed. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, and it's on the board, and that only includes the notaries. So if you're in favor, signify by push, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, okay. Moving on. If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Kathy? And Tom? We're good. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 714-1, a resolution making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Williamson County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015. Nina? Entertain a motion to approve, Commissioner Little?
Move.
Move for approval?
Yes.
Commissioner Brockman II. Now I'll turn it over to you, Nina.
Okay. I think our plan was to go through, and I'll read off each of the totals for the major Starting in the General Fund, the total for general administration is $11,525,621.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Green II. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of the General Administration Fund, signify by pushing your yes button. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
All right. Nina?
In the Finance category, $4,367,067.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Little? Commissioner Wilson II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the finance number, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Passes. Nina?
Administration of Justice, $3,655,407.
Move for approval?
Second.
Mr. Little, Commissioner Cook II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Passes. Nina?
Public Safety, $20,569,992.
Entertain a motion.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Little, Commissioner Hayes II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the Public Safety number, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Nina?
Public Health and Welfare, $4,806,600.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Little? Commissioner Wilson II. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of the Public Health and Welfare figure, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Nina?
Social, Cultural, and Recreational Services, $14,858,693.
Commissioner Barnwell, Commissioner Hayes II. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
And it passes. Nina?
Agricultural and Natural Resources, $414,021.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Little, Commissioner Hayes II. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of the Agriculture and Natural Resources, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Nina?
Other General Government, $19,659,668.
Move for approval?
Second.
Mr. Little, Mr. Cook II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
And it passes. Nina?
Okay, the total General Fund is $79,857,069.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Little? Commissioner Hayes II. All in favor of the total General Fund, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
The General Fund passes. Nina?
Okay, the Solid Waste Sanitation Fund is a total budget of $5,479,771.
Commissioner Hester II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the Sanitation Fund, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Nina?
The Special Drug Control Fund is, which is the Sheriff's Drug Fund, is $95,000.
Move for approval?
Second.
Mr. Little, Commissioner Cook II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the total Special Drug Fund, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
It passes. Nina?
Total Highway Public Works Fund is $11,105,197.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Little, Commissioner Wilson, Wilson II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the Highway Fund, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
And it passes. Now move on to the General Purpose School Fund, or you want to finish you up, or?
Either way.
Okay, well, while you're here, we'll...
Okay.
We'll skip over the School Fund and I guess go down to the General Debt Service?
Mm-hmm. The total General Debt Service Fund is $36,235,500.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Little? Commissioner Jones II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the General Debt Service Fund, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Nina?
The total Rural Debt Service Fund is $20,593,000.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Little, the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Cook II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the total Rural Debt Service Fund, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Now we'll move back to the schools. Leslie?
General Purpose School, I don't, behind the green, green section, 273-014-314.
Move? Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, Commissioner Little II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the total General Purpose School Fund, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Passes. Leslie?
The Central Cafeteria Fund, $11,336,766.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, Commissioner Little II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the Central Cafeteria Fund, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Okay, we've got another one.
Extended School Program Fund, $3,235,366.
Commissioner Barnwell, Commissioner Little II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the total extended school program, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
So the total county budget for all funds is $440,951,983.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Little, the motion. Commissioner Cook II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the total county budget, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
The total county budget has passed. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion as a resolution as a whole on 714-1.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Little, Mr. Jones II. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So we're voting on the Resolution 714-1 as a whole. If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 714-2, resolution fixing the tax levy in Williamson County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Green II. Committee report, Budget Committee?
540 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is setting the tax rate for the different funds and the total of $2.31, same as it was last year.
Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 714-2, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Steve? Yours didn't confirm. There we go. Okay. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 714-3, resolution making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations of Williamson County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Wilson II. Committee report?
Budget Committee, 540 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is our annual appropriations to the various nonprofits, which is volunteer fire department, senior citizens, public health, and some of the various nonprofits in the county. There are a couple of additions and changes this year.
Very good. Any discussion? Commissioner Hester?
Yes, sir. I'd like to say, because I serve on the board of some of these nonprofits and have a direct interest in them, I would like to say that I will vote my conscience, and I will vote to serve my constituents in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Duly noted. Commissioner Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as I have stated every year, and if we could just have it in the record, I have nothing personally against any of these organizations. I think they're wonderful. It is the, this resolution is odd to me in that it combines the volunteer fire department with the senior citizens section with a list of about 14 charities that the county gives tax dollars to. And so because there is still no, there are no guidelines to determine which of these charities get tax subsidy and which do not, there's no guidelines to determine how much they get. Because of that, I just can't support it, and I do want to take this opportunity to go ahead and invite any of the Commissioners that will be serving again in the next term to join me in forming a committee that we, where we can have public meetings. I know some of you have already expressed interest, where we can try to take a stab at this again. I know it's no easy task, because I'm certain that every Commissioner now and serving the future has a huge heart for all of these organizations. I'm sure that's how this list began. The state allows it, and so we started giving to different charities, but the county has changed a lot, has grown a lot. There is a robust private sector that meets a lot of these needs, or a lot of competitors within the same, our same county that serve the same needs that some of these serve, but yet this list is sort of a cherry-picked list. And I think that as the county gets larger and the public, and the private sector gets larger, that we need to address this. So I'm hoping that some of you will join me in forming some kind of guidelines. I'd like to go ahead, too, and read some of these into the record with how much money we do give them in county tax subsidies. And so, um, because there is still no, there are no guidelines to determine which of these charities get tax subsidy and which do not, um, there's no guidelines to determine how much they get. Um, because of that, I just can't support it, and, and I do want to take this opportunity to go ahead and invite any of the commissioners that will be serving again in the next term to join me in, uh, forming a committee that we, where we can have public meetings. I know some of you have already expressed inter, interest, um, where we can try to take a stab at this again. I know it's no easy task, um, because I, I'm certain that every commissioner, uh, now and serving the future has a huge heart for all of these organizations. I'm sure that's how this list began. The state allows it, and so we started giving to different charities, but the county has changed a lot, has grown a lot. There is a robust private sector that meets a lot of these needs, or a lot of competitors within the same, our same county that serve the same needs that some of these serve, but yet this list is sort of a cherry pick list, and I think that as the county gets larger and the public, um, and the private sector gets larger, that we need to address this. So I'm hoping that some of you will join me in, in, um, forming some kind of guidelines. I'd like to go ahead too and read some of these into the record with how much money we do give them in county tax subsidy, so that people can start, um, being educated on which, which receive tax subsidy, subsidy and, and others that may not. Um, the MC Community Action Center under Community Services receives nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-six. The MC HRA Homemaker Services receives thirty-six thousand. Grace Works, a wonderful organization, they receive seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. Foster Children Child Care, eleven thousand dollars. Adult Activities Waves receives forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-four. The Boys and Girls Club, again, great organization, they get eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty. Community Child Care, seven thousand, five hundred and eight. My Friends House, four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight. Crime Stoppers, wonderful organization, saves us money. They only get eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. MC HRA Nutrition Program, fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. MC HRA Transportation Program, two thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. Association for Retarded Citizens, one thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Saddle Up, eighteen hundred dollars. Take the Rains, eighteen hundred dollars. And Bridges of Williamson County, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. So I just want to start that conversation so that going forward, we might be able to better, um, introduce some guidelines as to which ones of these in the future will be on this list and have some parameters for how much money they get as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Um, out of the respect of, uh, or out of the hope of preventing, uh, or to prevent redundancy, I will just simply second Commissioner Danner's comments. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? Commissioner Herbert?
Well, I'm gonna have to respond to this. As a longtime resident of Williamson County, you know, that's what we're known for, for being a caring county, caring about other people, not as fortunate as us. And, you know, lots of people before this county commission came here voted for this because they wanted to take care of the senior citizens, the people that made this county, and it just really upsets me when I see people come in and down this, when we try to take care, because not everybody here has a child going to school. Not everybody moves here for their kids. People move here for the quality of life, and I hope everybody here supports that, because this is what Williamson County stands for. It just makes me so mad.
Any other discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? Commissioner Hancock? Commissioner Danner?
Yes, and if, if we're, the next commission gets to the point of having guidelines, which, nothing wrong with guidelines, I wish that one of the, uh, things that they would put in is a guideline that the private sector, which has been referred to, would, we could identify whom or whom in the private sector was going to fund the agency that we was removing, and was that going to be an on, an ongoing obligation of that, uh, rather than just, uh, push somebody off and then hope that the money comes. Thank you.
Ready to vote? If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen-three, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, two no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen-four, resolution appropriating one million, three hundred sixty thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars in the general purpose school fund to raise for, raise authorized by the Williamson County Budget Committee for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Commissioner Barnwell?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Little the second. Uh, school board, twelve yes, zero no. Education Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five yes, zero no.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is the, uh, the two percent salary increase that was, uh, approved by the Budget and Education Committee prior, after the budget was approved. Uh, this is for the, the, uh, non-teachers that get a step raise. This will be for everybody else that doesn't get a step raise. And it, we, the funds are available in the fund balance.
All right. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Ricky Jones?
I know I signed the statement, but as a teacher, I'll say I have a direct conflict. I will vote my conscience and my con, I mean, my constituents' conscience also on this.
Duly noted. Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen-four, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Ma?
He wants to change his vote.
Ashley, can you clear him out? Okay. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. Twenty-three yes and one no. Or one abstain, excuse me.
Did you want to abstain?
No, sir. I'd like for it to reflect a yes vote.
Okay. Let, let the record notice it was twenty, twenty-four yes.
Twenty-four yes?
Resolution passes.
I don't know.
Resolution seven fourteen-five, resolution appropriating four million dollars adequate school facilities, privileged tax funds, and approving the related operating transfers for two thousand fourteen, fifteen general debt service expenditures. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval?
Second.
Mr. Little the second. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Education Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the moving some, some accumulated privileged tax funds into the general debt service to help with the next year's debt payments.
All right. Uh, any discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen-five, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen-six, uh, resolution appropriating five million dollars education privileged tax funds and approving the related operating transfers for two thousand fourteen, fifteen rural debt service expenditures. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval?
Second.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Education Committee?
Four, four, one against.
Uh, explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, this is the adequate facilities tax being moved into, uh, rural debt service to help with the debt service payments for next year.
All right. Any discussion? Uh, Nina?
Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Educational privilege tax.
All right. Uh, any discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? If you're in favor of seven fourteen-six, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen-seven, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen, fifteen county general fund budget by three hundred, ten thousand, five hundred dollars revenues to come from county general undesignated fund balance. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Commissioner Hester the second. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is capital expenditures for vehicles, uh, coming from general fund fund balance.
Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen-seven, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen, fifteen capital projects budget by two hundred, one thousand, twenty-five dollars and approving the related operating transfers, revenues to come from county general undesignated fund balance. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell the second. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is also capital expenditures for the Fairview Library expansion, county portion, the Ag Expo Park, some equipment, and, uh, Winch County TV upgrades, and again, this is coming from, uh, fund balance.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen-eight, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen-nine, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen, fifteen solid waste sanitation budget by three hundred, thirty-five thousand dollars, revenues to come from unappropriated solid waste sanitation fund balance. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Hayes the second. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is some capital expenditures for the solid waste department coming out of their fund balance.
Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen-nine, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution amending the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen highway department budget and appropriating up to seven hundred, eighty thousand dollars for highway equipment purchases. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval?
Second.
Mr. Jones the second. Uh, Highway Commission, five, four, zero against. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is to replace some, uh, equipment that's, uh, outlived its, uh, usefulness, some of it nineteen and twenty years old, and it's time to cycle it out. They've reached the point of diminishing returns to try to keep them running. Appreciate your approval.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Kessler?
Just one question. Those are, uh, I've got a number of tractors myself and bushhogs, and those seem like rather expensive tractors. What, what, uh, what kind are we buying?
Which one, Commissioner, are you?
Well, the seventy thousand dollar tractor and bush hog.
They're a combination unit, I believe, but I'll, I'll, uh, yield to the one that drew the bid up. I think they're a combination unit with hydraulic arms that lift over on top of the fences and those kind of things, but I'm not totally sure.
Yes, sir. Those are actually combination bushhogs, and then you have to go out and get the, the, the bush hog for the tractor, so it's a combination.
Big bat wing bush hog, or it's the kind that's on the arm that's doing-
One is, one is a long arm bush hog, and the other two are side arm, or, or side, side bushhogs.
Those are like hundred and twenty horsepower tractors, or, I mean, they're, they're big, right?
Yes.
For that price? I mean, I've, I've got some that I paid thirty-four for the, the, you know, tractor combination bush hog, and I've got some that are thirty-four years old. I assume the ones that are, that are old have many, many hours on them. That's, that's a more relevant measure of age than years, correct?
Yes, sir, and we actually do purchase these off of statewide contracts, so that's, that's where we, we purchase them.
Okay. So you think that's what you, that's the minimum of what you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen-ten, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen-eleven, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen, fifteen highway department budget by fifty thousand dollars in related operating transfers for paving expenses, revenues to come from highway privileged tax funds. Commissioner Hancock?
Who for approval?
Commissioner Wilson the second. Uh, Highway Commission, five, four, zero against. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, uh, the highway commissioners have, uh, have, uh, identified the roads to, to be resurfaced, and this is just moving the privileged tax money to, through the asphalt mix where they can continue with the paving this summer.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen-eleven, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Farley? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen-twelve, resolution amending the five-year capital improvements budget and appropriating up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars recreation privileged tax funds for the purchase of various parks and recreation equipment.
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Little the second. Uh, Parks and Rec Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
All right. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Cook?
This is taking some money out of the recreation privilege tax to pay for, uh, different park facilities and amendments throughout the county.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen-twelve, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen-thirteen, resolution amending the two thousand fourteen, fifteen capital projects budget by a hundred thousand dollars for ball field lighting at Cheek Park, revenues to come from recreation privilege tax and general purpose school fund donations. Commissioner Cook?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Little the second. Uh, Parks and Rec Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Cook?
Uh, the lighting at the Joel Creek Park is eighteen years old, and it's probably costing us more money than we're gonna spend to replace it. Money's coming from, uh, privilege, the recreation privilege tax than the donation.
All right. Uh, any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Hayes?
I just want to thank both the Parks and Rec and the school, uh, board, the school department for their partnership. I think this is a perfect example where there's a park that's being used by both entities, and they're both sharing in the expenses, and I think that's, that's the way we need to carry out government in different partnerships.
Very good. Any other further discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen-thirteen, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen fourteen. Resolution appropriating funds and amending the two thousand fourteen fifteen Williamson County Animal Control Budget by nine thousand four hundred dollars. Revenues to come from donations.
Move for approval. Second.
Second. Commissioner Hayes and Hancock. Okay.
I'll yield to Commissioner Hayes.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, Hu- HR Committee?
Four four zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Public Health Committee?
Four four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hughes. Hayes, I'm sorry.
Uh, this is a continuation. We, we did this before. Uh, as you know, we've had excellent, um, adoption rates and very excellent save rates at our animal control. In fact, a year-to-date save rate, and we like that term better than euthanasia rate, our save rate is ninety-one point eight percent up to date. Now, that's, that's unbelievable, a less than ten percent euthanasia rate nationally. Saturday was our record adoption. We're in the midst of the Rachel Ray, uh, challenge, and things are really booming there. What is being done and requested here is for Williamson Animal Services to continue to fund a vet tech program, a, a employee vet tech program. As I've mentioned before, we have an excellent surgeon, a veterinarian, who needs two vet techs to keep up. One to assist during surgery, one to prepare before and administer after, as well as help in making sure all the animals are healthy. We have been through the process of the human resources. They become a county employee, but they are totally funded through the donations of Williamson Animal Services, which is an offshoot of the non-profit task force that, uh, was a couple of years back. So we look for, forward to a continuing rate of, and great things going on with our animal control program, but we need this additional, uh, person to assist. And since the county could not provide that this year, it didn't meet the guidelines. We hope in the coming year that may, uh, we may look differently at that. But for right now, we would like to fund that because it's very much needed.
Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of seven fourteen fourteen, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen fifteen. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Children's Services in appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen fifteen juvenile court budget by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson the second. HR Committee?
HR, four four zero against.
Law Enforcement Committee?
Five four zero against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a grant that was, uh, the juvenile court applied for from the State of Tennessee, and it will allow them to develop this intensive probation program with two probation officers. Uh, and I hope you will support this. It will be very helpful for the court.
Right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of seven fourteen fifteen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Commissioner Hester out. Okay. Uh, record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Just a second.
She's out.
Okay, twenty-three, yes. One absent.
All right. Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen sixteen. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen fifteen Office of Public Safety and Information Technology budgets by two hundred thousand dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little the second. Uh, Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this resolution runs with a couple of others that we have still to consider in our package. Assuming that we pass the resolution for public safety of moving the, uh, the five-point center out to the LoJack Building on Downs Boulevard, this provides for the operating for two thousand fourteen fifteen, uh, for, for the, uh, operating expenses for that facility.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. I, I do wanna recognize Attorney Bobby Cook for the hard work that he's done on this, and we appreciate that. And, uh, if you're ready to vote. All in favor of resolution seven fourteen sixteen, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time.
Mary?
Mary? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen seventeen. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen fifteen Register of Deeds budget by seventy thousand seven hundred dollars. Revenues to come from document recording fees. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Green the second. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is taking the register's recording fees and, uh, using it for part-time pay and for some lease payments, maintenance, and equipment.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen seventeen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen eighteen. Resolution authorizing Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Health and appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen fifteen animal control budget by three thousand five hundred dollars. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes the second. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is a state grant, requires no matching funds going into animal control to use for medical drugs and supplies.
All right. Commissioner Hayes?
You've seen the animal friendly license plate. This is part of that grant money that comes back from people who purchase those license plates from the state.
Any further discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen eighteen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, twenty-four, yes?
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen nineteen. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen fifteen county clerk's budget by twenty-five thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars. Revenues to come from reserve account. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Cook the second. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, it's the county clerk using reserve funds for office equipment.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen nineteen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen twenty. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen fifteen clerk and masters budget by twelve thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Revenues to come from reserve accounts. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson the second. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five four zero against as amended.
All right. Would you like to make that amendment?
We'd like to offer the amendment to add an additional seven hundred and fifty dollars, bringing the total to thirteen thousand. This is the request of the office.
Uh, proper amendment, is, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Green the second. Uh, so we're voting on the amendment, and it's loaded. Any discussion on the amendment? I see none. If you're in favor of the amendment, uh, of resolution seven fourteen twenty, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
The amendment passes. So now, now back to the main resolution, seven fourteen twenty as amended. Uh, any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen twenty as amended, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen twenty-one. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen fifteen Circuit Court Clerk's budget by thirty-five thousand dollars. Revenues to come from reserve account. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Mr. Dwight Jones the second. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is the Circuit Court Clerk taking reserve funds for office equipment.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen twenty-one, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen twenty-two. Resolution accepting a donation from the DUI Court Foundation of Williamson County Incorporated and appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen fifteen Williamson County General Sessions Court budget by fifteen thousand two hundred dollars. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Little the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a fifteen thousand two hundred dollar donation from the DUI Court Foundation of Williamson County to be used for the, uh, operations of the DUI Court.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen twenty-two, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Resolution of the governing body of Williamson County, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of interest-bearing two thousand fourteen fifteen general purpose school fund tax anticipation notes not to exceed fifteen million dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell and Commissioner Brockman? Uh, there we go. Uh, Education Committee?
Five four zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is our annual foray into the, uh, getting the school system some money so they can operate prior to the, uh, tax revenues starting to come into the kitty. Uh, this, we normally borrow this out of our fund balances, but we still have to go through this process.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen twenty-three, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen twenty-four. Resolution requesting an intent to fund in the amount of four million dollars for the Williamson County Board of Education two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen capital needs. Mr. Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little the second. Uh, School Board, twelve yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Five four zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Uh, explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, a request that started out, I believe, about thirteen million dollars, and through negotiations and, and, uh, the back and forth, both the Budget Committee and the Education Committee approved a four million dollar capital funding for this year.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven fourteen twenty-four, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen twenty-five. Resolution of the intent to fund certain county general projects totaling two million six hundred seventy-two thousand two hundred dollars in a two thousand fourteen bond issue. Uh...
Move for approval.
Mr. Little?
Second.
Mr. Hayes the second. Uh, let's see. Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Uh, Property Committee?
Six four zero against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Parks and Rec Committee?
Six four zero against.
Uh, Commissioner Little, you wanna address this?
Yes, in the budgeting process, we did part of our capital improvements from fund balance and part from bond issue. This is the intent to fund for the bond issue portion of capital improvements.
All right. Commissioner Ford, if you wanna speak?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is, these are all great projects, and I wanna commend Commissioner Little in his, uh, his committee for ferreting down these projects. And this is, I believe, a very, uh, conservative, uh, uh, request from capital projects. I would like to understand from Commissioner Little what the thought process is on these particular projects being in a bond issue versus them, uh, coming out of fund balance.
I will defer that to the county mayor's office for explanation.
Thank you. Um, when I go through the budgeting process, um, the capital needs that are requested, we look at the dollar amounts, and, um, those are based on how much we project our fund balance to be, and looking at what the draw will be to make the budget work. So the current year, there's, um, a little over ten million dollars draw on the general fund balance to make the budget work. So I analyze that and looking at what the reserves should be based on criteria set forth by Moody's. So that's how I come to the conclusion of what we pay for out of fund balance versus what's out of a bond issue.
Thank you, thank you, Nina. And so I believe, uh, the beginning fund balance, if I'm looking at my sheet right, is, uh, almost thirty-seven million. And I think we added to that fund balance last year. I heard that earlier, right? What, what's the, um, reasoning of why this year, last year we were able to add to it, and this year we're having to draw that down by ten million?
Well, the prior year we did draw, it was a little over ten million as well, um, to make the budget work. Now, as you go through the budgeting process, when we close the year out, if you have increased revenues that come in or unexpended appropriations that go back in, that helps to, um, increase your fund balance as well.
So, so that eight percent reserve goes back in, the eight percent we reserve puts about three million or so, and then, uh, because of the, the good work of the, uh, department heads, we underspend the budget then also, and that adds back in here, right? So things like the Nolan's Will Rec Center not open on time, that adds back into the fund balance and that, those kind of things. So, um, it, it appears to me that, that, given that last year, we, looking out at the year, we looked like we were gonna be in the same shape of, of ten million dollar deficit, and we actually added to that, that, uh, unless something material changes in the county, that, and, and I think the county's in great shape, that we'd be in the same thing. I'd like to request that, and make a motion that we, uh, pay for these, uh, projects out of fund balance rather than put them on a bond. Uh, I look at, at patrol vehicles on here. Uh, I don't, I don't think any of us would borrow twenty years for a, uh, for a car. There's things like mattresses and tasers and computer software and things we need. But, uh, I'd, I'd like for us to be able to pay cash for those rather than borrow that money. So I'd like to make that, uh, that motion, Mr. Chairman, that rather than approve these out of a two thousand fourteen bond issue, we approve these out of our, uh, fund balance.
Second.
About the motion, Commissioner Danner, the second. All right, discussion, discussion on the motion. Mr. Ryan, are you on the motion?
Yes, sir, I believe it still plays into the, to the amendment. Nina, can you tell us how long this bond is? Is it a fifteen, twenty-year?
It is a twenty-year bond. Typically, the way we've done that in the past, the shorter-lived assets, we pay for those in the principal payments up front.
Okay, I, thank you. I would, I share Commissioner Ford's concern over putting computer software on a twenty-year note. Thank you, Nina, that was very helpful.
Mr. Danner, on the amendment?
Concerns over technology. I think, I hope that maybe in the future, we can look at some, maybe a resolution that won't allow us to put software and technology on bonds. It just doesn't make any sense.
Commissioner Kestner? All right. Any other discussion? Commissioner Herbert?
I wanted to hear from the mayor about this. His opinion.
I agree with the concept of what we're trying to do. We're also trying to keep a healthy fund balance. We did make it grow, our fund balances, and yes, you have your ninety-two expenditure. But one of the things, it's a measuring board, and Nina and I went back and forth. We can live with it, you're just taking out the money from other expenses and other things you may need down the road. It's not the end of the world by any stroke of the imagination.
Any further discussion? Mr. Hayes?
Then do I understand that you did think of this possibility, and you chose to go the other route to give you more leverage?
Yes, I mean, it's a difficult choice. I mean, the schools do it, we do it, some of the things you all have mentioned that we're funding. We do structure the bond in such a way that the the note itself is not paying for all that material. It may be a twenty-year note, but we structure those on the front end so that they've paid her out. We've done this before, as Jeff knows. If you're looking for me, it's not something I'm going to fall on the sword for and die. We can live with it, just remember, we're taking some money out of fund balance. And so there's two philosophies here. You will come back during this next year and ask for some more money, and we will say there is no money at the well. There's two million dollars or whatever it is left.
Any further discussion on the amendment? I see none, it's loaded on the machine, you ready to vote?
I did.
Tommy?
I pushed it several times, but it doesn't seem to go in. Yes, when we, this was presented to the Budget Committee, and that was one of the points that we needed to make. One, the shorter-lived assets are paid off first. And the second is, we're looking at bond issues. The bond issue payments are not in the, this year's budget yet. And we use fund balance to pay for those. So the thought process is, we're going to be taking from fund balance some additional borrowing. And so to reserve that, and that was one of the reasons for issuing this in bonds.
Commissioner Kestner?
Yeah, as I look at the list, I really don't see very much that has a twenty-year life. And while I appreciate trying to match fund the serial bond maturities with the shorter-lived assets, I really only see maybe one here that's a, that's a twenty-year asset, and that's the county building work. I guess the other concern I have is that when you go through the machinations of a bond issue, you have a lot of legal costs and other expenses. And a very small bond issue usually has very high transactions costs and aren't very well, well, they just aren't very efficient. So, so I'm concerned about that.
Respond.
Nina, did you want to?
All of these intent to funds will be rolled into the larger issue. Yes, sir. And as well, I mean, I would, this is one of the factors that I look at in analyzing the fund balance. And keeping a strong fund balance in your general fund and not having a draw, an increased drawdown year after year is something that they factor in the rating call. So I do, I would recommend that you put this in the bond issue.
Commissioner Danner?
For Nina, while you're here. So earlier, when you said that the, the projection for increased sales tax and revenue, so that picture won't play into filling this fund balance or backfilling it effectively? We don't think that we could make up that two million?
There will be a portion that's made up, but it, on the books, it is taking us ten million dollars of our fund balance to make our budget work this year. So those are the analysis that they look back at year after year in analyzing the fund balance draw. They do take into account the monies, the reserve funds, and what's turned back in as well. But that is one of the things that they look at.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Ready to vote on the amendments? On, loaded? If you're in favor of the amendment, push your yes button. And confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Now, for the record, the amendment was to take the money out of fund balance. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Can we clear the machine and start again? Okay, in a nutshell, the amendment was to, to take two million six hundred seventy-two thousand two hundred dollars from fund balance to pay on a twenty-year note. If you're in favor of that amendment, push your yes button. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Eight yes, sixteen no.
It fails. So we're back to the original Resolution seven fourteen twenty-five. Any further discussion? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of seven fourteen twenty-five, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, twenty-one yes and three no.
Resolution passes. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we'll break for lunch. We will meet out at the Ag Park. Remember to meet at the front for our annual photograph, and we will recess and reconvene at one-thirty. Like to call us back in session? Couple things, we all enjoyed, had a great lunch. Tommy Little reminded me to tell you, we've got the fair coming up, and he's got some signature cards up here. If anybody wants to drive a courtesy cart, all are welcome to do that. It's a whole lot of fun, we've done it for years, and it's, to me, it's the best ride at the fair, so. Paul Webb in the back, you can see him, and he can get you signed up too, so there we go. All right, moving on. Resolution seven fourteen twenty-six. Resolution of the intent to fund for me Oh, do we? Okay. All right. I was just told we need a roll call vote, so if you're present, push your yes button and confirm. Yeah, I had another meeting, so. Is Brian with you, Travis?
He's out there on the phone.
Okay. If he doesn't log in, you'll be able to count his vote, okay. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
We got twenty-two present.
Twenty-two present. Okay. We're back in session. Resolution seven fourteen twenty-six. Resolution of the intent to fund for me in seven hundred forty-five thousand dollars for certain public safety projects for Williamson County. Revenues to be derived from donations and funds received from a two thousand fourteen bond issue. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Mr. Hayes, the second. Property Committee? Law Enforcement Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, as you know, the downtown Franklin Rescue Squad Station has, has to move. And this is building one facility to replace part of that and renovating a Downs Boulevard property that we are renting. And this is the bond issue to get those, the funds for renovation and building the new building.
All right. Any other sponsors want to speak to it at this time? Commissioner Hayes?
This will also improve the safety for our residents in the Goose Creek, south end of the county. The insurance should go down. It will have better coverage. Back in our long-term plan, we were, our wish was to get within five miles a rescue fire station within five miles of every resident in the unincorporated county. This works toward that goal, and it is sorely needed because that area is very much unserved.
Very good. Any discussion? Commissioner Barnwell?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I think this is a very valid project. However, I've got a significant problem with who's paying for it. If you recall, back in two thousand and four, we did a study on providing fire service throughout the county, and it sort of died a quick death when it came out that it was going to be a dollar fifty-three increase in the property tax rate for this fire zone that we were supposed to create. This is, this is serving a population that is not in incorporated areas. The majority of the residents in this community, including all my constituents, live in, in an area provide, that has provided fire service, and they're paying for it through their city taxes. And I just think it is inappropriate for everybody in the county to be paying for these buildings. You know, the, the name of the highway fund is the Highway Public Works Fund. And this is probably expenditure that should be covered under the public works for the unincorporated areas. I believe the same taxpayers that pay into the highway fund property tax would be covered by this, and I think this is how this needs to be done. People that live in the city should not have to pay for two fire services.
Commissioner Wilson?
Oh, yes, I wanted to speak to that issue. Commissioner Barnwell said, there are residents out on the east side that did have, have had service downtown Franklin, and they are about five to seven miles from their fire stations with having it down there. They probably will have access to this new area. Their insurance ratings are astronomical. They have been, using Cedarmont as an example, they have had to pay the highest rating for their insurance. And I think this would be advantageous to that area. It's, it's, it's really a tough area, I know, but it's sorely needed out in that area. I do think that we do need to support this.
We just met, we got a couple others. Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes, I would. Well, I understand your comments, Mr. Barnwell. I don't necessarily agree with all of them. We have a mutual agreed aid with everybody. Now, we finally got it back with Ferryview. That works both ways. If the Franklin Fire Department needs it, we work the same way with them as we do with everybody else. So there is people inside the city limits of Franklin that will get this, will be able to get this aid. There's people inside, I'm assuming, Spring Hill, that will get the same aid. So if they're in Williamson County, we're all in it together. It's not singling anybody out, anyone group out. We're all in Williamson County together. Even though they live in the city of Franklin, they're still a Williamson County resident.
Commissioner Danner?
Just to, just to clarify, we're not, we're not debating whether, whether we need this or not. It's about where we're funding it from. And so do you have a motion on the floor to change the funding source? Is that what we're trying to do?
No, we don't have a motion.
Funding source is mentioned in the general bonds, that's why I wanted to bring it up now. Because I don't think that's the correct funding source.
Anybody else that hadn't spoken to it? Commissioner Barnwell?
To get back to Kathy's things, I'm not against the project, I'm just against who gets to pay for it. And the payer should be the direct beneficiaries. Like I pay Franklin property taxes, I'm a direct beneficiary of the fire department within Franklin. They come, they, they are my fire department. The, I understand the rates are high out there. That's, that's, that's not my problem. The problem is the fact that I'm being asked to subsidize somebody else's insurance rates, and I don't think it's my job.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Kestner?
I would note that we will also build every school for every Franklin City child for the foreseeable future. So, you know, nothing's going to be perfect.
Any further discussion? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen twenty-six, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes, two no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen twenty-seven. Resolution of the intent to fund certain parks and recreation projects for Williamson County. Revenues to be derived from funds received from a two thousand fourteen bond issue. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Mr. Langston, the second. Property Committee? Parks and Rec Committee?
Five, four, one against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is the intent to fund on the Academy Park project that we've heard so much about today for the Senior Enrichment Center and for the theater. This is the intent to fund for the bonds for those projects. One of the points I'd like to make with this, and I don't know if this is the right time or not, is that seventy, approximately seventy to seventy-five percent of the households in the county do not have students in the school system. Yet sixty-seven percent of their taxes go towards that. This gives them something for their tax dollars.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is one particular resolution that I struggled with quite, quite a bit. But at the end of the day, unfortunately, at this time, I cannot support. And the reason for that is, is not, not due to whether or not we want it or need it. It's all about the timing at this time. For me, it's the concern that I have with the price tag that's involved with it, and something that I think we'll be in better position to realize whether or not we can afford it this time next year. And so from Representative of the Eleventh, she wanted to explain my, my vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Danner?
I echo Commissioner Ryan's thoughts, but I just want to add that for me, it was throughout the process, we had heard there would be a commitment for outside funding, both private sector and also the city of Franklin. And so because that was not secured, I just felt, I really feel strongly that we should have deferred this project. It's great to hear our budget director say that we should be able to afford all of these projects without a tax increase next year. I'm looking forward to that coming true. But then, when you ask Dr. Looney what he's going to throw out, a $68 million worth of school funding, I just don't, I do not know how we're going to be able to afford that. And for me, while I know that there are two-thirds, I'm very sensitive to the fact, Commissioner Little, that two-thirds of the population don't have kids in the schools. Unfortunately for us, the roadmap has already been drawn as to how we need to prioritize, and we're just not doing it. If we vote yes on everything, we will be raising taxes systematically. We've got to start prioritizing. And so, for me, it's a matter of prioritization. We just, the state requires schools, whether we like it or not. They require highway, and they require Sheriff's Department. They don't require a senior academy enrichment center. I like it, I think the project is swell, but until I am convinced we can afford it, and the fact that there's just no, there's no commitment from anyone else to help buck up for this thing, I can't vote on it right now.
Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you very much. This is something, this project, I think is probably one of the things that I feel near and dear to, and I'll tell you why. My father, when he was alive, spent almost every day at the Senior Citizen Center. Why did he go there? He loved the company. He was a senior, and he was eighty years old, and he loved going there. This is not just a senior center. It is, as you heard earlier from those that spoke earlier, this is also for our children's enjoyment, for the thousands of people that participate in the Parks and Rec. And I know, and maybe most of you don't know, some of you that are a little newer to this area, seniors are your best voters. You can count on them for their patriotism to go and vote because they feel that is their honor to go and vote. And I think you're making a mistake, and I understand this is a priority with some of you, not to fund it now, but I very much appreciate the fact that we can use property that we already have. We're not paying for property. We're paying for building something that can enhance the whole community. It's not just a Franklin thing. It's for our seniors and other members. So, I do approve this.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes, I do support this project. I served on the committee. I know that a number of people in the community worked on this very hard. I know the mayor and his staff have worked with this, and Mr. Hood. I know we can't meet every need, but I think there is something, I know, and I agree with Commissioner Danner, but I think when we look at the power, the things that we need to do, it all involves health, safety, welfare, and other things within the community, which I think this falls well within the category and role of any government to fulfill. I would ask you to vote for it, and I will vote for it.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I read this resolution, I don't see anything about a senior enrichment center. I do see Academy Park enrichment center. And so, I think this project is being misconstrued a little bit as for, strictly for the seniors. As I sat through the committee hearings, I heard a multi-purpose facility that could be used as a community center for populations across the county. If this were nothing more than a senior center, it would deserve our respect and deserve our consideration. As it is a community center that can serve multiple populations, then that sways me to a yes vote on this. So, I just wanted to make the point that it's not strictly a senior citizen. It's, it can be used for those purposes, but it's got a multi-community use, thank you.
Commissioner Hayes?
I'm just going to ditto everything that I said this morning about there being a quality of life issue. But I think sometimes that we do forget, as well as, I will go back and say, all the people who spoke this morning, I really took to heart the fact that they saw that not everybody wants to play ball, but there's something in there in Parks and Recs for everybody. But let's keep in mind, we've got a real deal with our Parks and Rec. We need to study and let Doug, at some point, tell us what percentage of his, how much income he brings in. In fact, I would think, if you would allow him, Mr. Chairman, he could probably tell me right now. Okay, Doug?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This year, with our numbers just finished, the Parks and Recreation Department brought in four million dollars in revenue. And we are about 1.3% of the entire county budget. 1.3%, and we brought in four million dollars in revenue. And our revenues were up this, were up this year over a hundred and six, about $160,000 from the year before. Commissioner Ford, if I could. One of my responsibilities is to create revenue for this department because I think it's a responsibility in a well-run department, and how I've been fiscally responsible for that. When designing this facility, as you know, most of our seniors participate from about six in the morning until about 2:30 in the afternoon. So, to build a building just for them and not utilize it for other parts of the residence for the county, I thought would be fiscally irresponsible. So, I'm going to generate revenue by having a wellness center in there, all these other programs that we can offer. We're going to rent the facility out. But we wanted to make sure that our seniors knew that this was their primary location to do the programs that we want to do for them. I don't want them to think that they were an afterthought under any circumstances. So, when we designed this, we designed it so we would be able to rent this facility, do other things in it till about 10 o'clock at night. As you, most of you know, we are open from five in the morning till 10 o'clock at night. And even on Sundays, we play softball at night. So, we're going as fast as we can go to try to accommodate everybody and bring in as much revenue as we can. And I'm very proud that we've turned in, you know, four million dollars worth. And as you all know too, who see my budget every year, I turn money in every year. I take this, I take this very seriously and responsibly, and I'd ask you to support this resolution.
It's a great deal worthy of our support.
Commissioner Coop?
I was going to ask for Director Hood to come up and explain it because he gave us a good explanation when we were at our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say, as much as I wish we were renovating Fleming Hall for this enrichment center, that didn't happen. It got torn down. It was tragedy to think about something that really meant so much historically and was named for Sam Fleming. However, it's gone, we have this property. It's our responsibility to utilize it in a positive way, and we're also renovating the oldest, one of the second-oldest gymnasium for this theater in the state of Tennessee. And that is literally what I consider a renovation project, a restoration project. And so, I totally support this, and I agree with you. Having the enrichment center built for the entire community is very important. So, let's do what we should do as far as that BGA Academy Park property, and this is the proposal, and I think it's a good one.
Any further discussion? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen twenty-seven, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Tom? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, twenty-one yes, two no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen twenty-eight. An initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $17 million general obligation bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee. Mr. Little?
Move for approval?
Mr. Green the second. Let's see, what, Budget Committee?
Five-four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, certain of our bond issues, we have to advertise in the paper ahead of time, and this is authorizing the advertisement of the bond issue.
Any discussion? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen twenty-eight, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen twenty-nine. A resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of not to exceed $36,500,000 of general obligation bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of debt service on the bonds. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Commissioner Green the second. Budget Committee?
Five-four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, of all the projects we've talked about today, this is the portion that are the general obligation bonds. The list of projects, we're at the tail end of the bond issue paperwork here.
Okay. Any discussion? If I may, might add, you'll notice in the heading, it lists $36,500,000. On the back page, we're talking about $38,500,000. The $2 million difference is where we financed the project at Nolan'sville. And they refinanced it, the way I understand it, through their own bond, and so paid us the $2 million back. So, we're using that to pay against this. Commissioner Barnwell?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer an amendment to reduce this bond total to not to exceed $29,500,000 with $7 million being taken from adequate facilities taxes and paid directly to the school system for the construction of Nolan'sville High School. These funds are sitting there doing idle in this account. And I think it'd be a better use of managing our debt to use money we have versus borrowing more money.
Proper motion, is there a second? Commissioner Ryan? Any discussion on the amendment? Would you restate the motion, Bob?
Yes, I'd like to offer amendment to reduce the amount of this bond to not to exceed $29,500, and to utilize $7 million of adequate facilities taxes that's sitting there earning 0.35% interest. So, we won't have to borrow $7 million at 3% to 5% interest. I think this would help us manage our debt and not take debt on that we don't necessarily have to because the money's in this account.
Commissioner Danner?
I think this was discussed at a Budget Committee meeting, and I just want to clearly understand, I'm always in favor of trying to borrow less and put more cash down, especially on the schools. But can we get Nina to come up here? Is she still here? I felt like it was determined that if we did that, and I just kind of want Nina's heard to weigh in, does this, does this for sure create a tax increase decision?
The statements that I made earlier where the revenues were looking good for the next year, I did take into account being able to use these to apply towards our debt service payments. So, if you took these away and used them for the project, which you can do that, I would not have that to pay towards the debt service.
Which would create a tax increase? Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just like to say that this is an adequate facilities tax account. It has annual growth based on the construction going on in this community, and there'll be more money there next year based on the fact the county is growing. So, that's, can help Ms. Graham with her problem.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay. Commissioner Kessler?
Got a question. Do we have, of our outstanding GO bonds, are some of those callable that will?
We do have bond council here.
There is a portion that is, and I'll bet Ashley McAnulty with Stevens Incorporated speak to that. He's with our financial.
That'd be great, that'd be great. Understand who he is.
Thank you. There actually is a resolution that will come up later in the meeting for some 2007 bonds that are callable and available for refunding.
I saw that, and that's anticipated, and I assume that's already in Nina's calculations.
Right.
Are there other portions of our bond issues that are outstanding and are called?
We regularly monitor those, so as soon as they're available and makes sense to refund, we actually bring those to the county commission.
Do we do, is it legal for the county to do low floater bond issues, sir?
Floater bond issues, I assume you're referring to a variable rate?
Variable rate, remarkable, and therefore?
The county can issue variable rate debt. Because fixed interest rates are as low as they are right now, the variable rate is really not very competitive against a long-term fixed interest rate.
I get that. The only issue is if you do variable rate, you can prepay those without penalty, whereas fixed rate, you get into these lockout periods, correct?
Right, but typically, you're borrowing on a fixed rate for a longer-term life of the asset, so it would not be very wise to borrow for a 40-year building with a short-term interest rate because you, if the rates go up over the life of that issue, then your total interest cost is going to be a whole lot higher.
I get the rate risk of rising rates, although we've never had an inverted tax-exempt yield curve in the history of the country, but we do have rates that rise, I understand that. So, the point is, we don't have any flexibility to do prepayments or calls of outstanding bonds other than what's already in this next coming resolution, correct?
It is a callable bond, so you can refund those bonds, and you can also advance refund those bonds. So, you can, if the interest rates are lower than where they are right now, which on this issue, we're looking at around a 3% interest rate fixed. If the rates are lower than that in the future, you could call those bonds in and refund them to a lower.
When we defees those bonds, what do we reinvest the proceeds in, though, of the defeasement funds?
U.S. Treasuries.
And so, do we get hammered on that because that's a lower rate?
Well, it depends on what the treasury rates are at the time that you do the refunding. In the past?
In today's market, if we were to issue these bonds and then defees these bonds, we would be penalized with a prepayment penalty, would we not, because of low assumed?
Well, it assumes that you're borrowing on such a low fixed rate, it would not make sense to do that in the current market.
I understand that, I'm just looking for a way we can have some flexibility in the amount of bond debt outstanding, and what you're telling me is we don't have those opportunities at this moment.
Well, variable rate's not going to give you that.
Except you can prepay that at will without a penalty.
You could prepay the fixed rate as well.
But you have to defees that with an assumed, you get a yield maintenance problem when you defees existing fixed rate bonds.
Well, you'd also have to defees a variable rate.
Depends on how you structure the indenture because that, you can choose to not remarket some of those typically, can you not?
You would, if you were to pay off variable rate, which we have issued variable rate with other entities in the past, we refunded a number of those, and quite frankly, most people have exited the variable rate in the last couple of years because the fixed interest rates are so low
I understand that.
Then in a low-interest rate environment, the last thing you want to do is issue variable rate and ride the interest rates up.
I understand that.
So, the time to issue variable rate would be when the interest rates are going down.
I get all that, the shape of the yield curve. I'm just looking for flexibility in principal outstanding, so, okay.
Right.
I understand. So, the answer is?
But these are callable.
The answer is, if we do everything that we plan on doing here today, and we issue these bonds, and we defees these other bonds that have the 4.5% coupon that were issued in '07, we will not then have any flexibility to adjust, in other words, we can't prepay without defeesing?
Well, you would have to defees the variable rate. Either variable or fixed, you would have to defees the prior debt. You'd have to pay off the prior debt regardless.
I've seen indentures, though, where you, you know, you choose each week, is you remarket how much you're going to remarket. So, that's not a prepayment, that's just a failure to remarket the full amount, but I get it.
These are callable, and they can be advanced refunded.
Through defeases.
Right, that's right.
Any further discussion on the amendment? You ready to vote on the amendment? Bob, can you restate the amendment?
Yes, to reduce the amendment, it's the one that's going to be fixed. That's what I want to the Nolan'sville place to. Construction costs. Which is adding the facilities taxes have to go forward for the new schools. Use it to pay down the debt, or we use it to pay cash.
Need to clarify. Alright. Ready to vote on the amendments? Loaded on the machine.[1790.74] Commissioner Ryan?
I'm not a CPA. Very simply put, if we pass, if we approve this amendment, Nina, you believe that there could be a tax increase next year? I just need a very simple answer on this. Likely? I mean, I need some mods.
I did use the balance available and the adequate facilities tax. I had anticipated using that to pay down the debt.
Okay. So, in your mind, it's likely that we would be seeing a tax increase?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Loaded on the machine. If you're in favor of the amendment, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Two yes, twenty-one no.
So, the amendment fails. Back on the original resolution, seven fourteen twenty-nine. Any discussion on the original resolution? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen twenty-nine, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen thirty. Resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of not to exceed twenty-three million, one hundred thousand dollars of county district school bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of debt service on the bonds. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Jones, Dwight Jones, the second. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little.
Yes, this is the other half of the bond issue for the school portion that are outside of the cities. I've got my department's rate.
All right. Any discussion? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen thirty, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen thirty-one. A resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of county district school refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding county district school bonds and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of debt service on the bonds. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little.
I think this has been talked about several times today. This is actually the refunding the previous bonds to try to get a lower interest rate. If those does not materialize, then we would not be refunding them.
All right. Any discussion? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen thirty-one, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Harley? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late Resolution number seven fourteen forty-five. Resolution accepting an anonymous donation of twenty thousand dollars on behalf of the Williamson County Animal Control Department for the purchase and installation of sun tunnels within the facility, and further accepting a donation of three thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of an awning affixed to the facility and amending and appropriating the two thousand fourteen, fifteen animal control budget by twenty-three thousand dollars. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Bethard, the second. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes.
Yes, if you remember, we had a donated sun tunnels, money that was used for sun tunnels. I believe we had five sun tunnels that were done. That has given a lot of light and made a much more pleasant area. This anonymous donor has seen the need, along with our director and several other people, of needing to make more light and doing more sun tunnels. They have agreed to do the anonymous donation for this and the awning provision of the effect of the Verilux sun tunnels. They are the, sort of, the lead people of the sun tunnels. They have certification requirements of the people that install them. So, that was a condition of the donation. And it does go along with guarantees, warranty. And of course, it is done under the guidance of our own property director. And the money is given to the county, and it is executed through our property with all the donations coming from this anonymous donor, as well as the awning to offer shade for the animal walkers attached to the building.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Any discussion on this? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen forty-five, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen forty-six. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand fourteen, fifteen Capital Projects budget by four hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a fire engine for the Williamson County Volunteer Fire Service. Revenues to come from fire protection privilege tax funds. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Mr. Jones, the second. This go through budget, Tommy?
It did not.
Did not? Okay, I don't believe it went through any. Okay, all right. Can you talk?
Yes, thanks, sir.
About it? Tommy?
During the budget process, when we went through the capital funding, this was approved by the Budget Committee as one of the capital projects. This is appropriating the funds to purchase it with.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. Commissioner Herbert?
Which squad is it going to? Do y'all know?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Bill. I can't tell you where it's going right now. What we're doing now is managing the fleet instead of stating what area of the county the engine's going to. So, with that in mind, it'll go to where the greatest need is. And probably, right now, it needs to go to Station Twelve, which is at the hospital. But that doesn't mean we may not take an engine out of another station, put it at Station Twelve, and put the new engine at another location. So, we're trying to manage the fleet and make sure we put the proper amount of, they get the proper amount of use that's appropriate, so we don't have engines sitting in stations that have very low mileage and have reached twenty-five years of service and need to be replaced. You'll see, right now, coming in, we've got two tankers. Just to give you an idea, one's going to Arrington, and we'll be pulling an engine out of Arrington, replacing it with a tanker. That engine will probably end up going to the hospital. The one at the hospital will probably end up going into reserve, maybe. We've also got a tanker coming to go to Flack Creek Station. We've also got a new brush truck that's on its way. It'd be going to College Grove. We also have a new rescue pumper coming in that'll be going to the rescue squad and probably end up at Goose Creek at the new fire station there. So, we're trying to better manage the fleet. There's eleven engines right now that need to be replaced, and that's not including growth that are, and four of those eleven are critical to be replaced. And we're not, and we're just barely touching those every year.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen forty-six, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen thirty-three. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the United States Secret Service concerning the Nashville District Electronic Fraud Task Force. Sorry about that, I was short-changed. We're going to rewind. Resolution seven fourteen thirty-two. Resolution authorizing the county mayor of Williamson County to approve assignment of the Joint Conference Center Operating Agreement Catering and Reciprocal Easement Use Agreement between Franklin Real Coal LLC and CH Realty Franklin in Cool Springs. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Property Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, just without going into great detail, it's changing management partners, basically. They were at the committee meeting. Everything should go smoothly.
All right. Any further discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen thirty-two, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen thirty-three. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the United States Secret Service concerning the Nashville District Electronic Fraud Task Force. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Little, the second. The Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This memorandum of understanding will allow the Sheriff's Department to work with the Secret Service on this electronic fraud task force. We're doing a lot of this work today. This will allow us to get reimbursement for the hours that we spend on that.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen thirty-three, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Cheryl? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen thirty-four. Resolution accepting the donation of four tasers and related equipment from Nissan to the Williamson County Sheriff's Office. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Mr. Cook, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
It was five, four, zero against as amended. So, do we need to amend this?
Yeah, let's.
The resolution states from Mr. Forrest Smith, and that needs to be replaced with Nissan. This is a donation from Nissan.
Proper motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ford, the second. All right. We can voice vote this. All in favor of that amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, now, we're back to the main Resolution seven fourteen thirty-four as amended. Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are four tasers that are being donated by Nissan, and we want to thank them for that donation.
Commissioner Danner?
Just for the record, because I work for Nissan, I'm going to abstain this vote.
Any other further discussion? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of seven fourteen thirty-four, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, one abstention.
All right, resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen thirty-five. A resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into a contractual agreement between the state of Tennessee and Williamson County for pass-through federal funding to subsidize emergency management. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our annual grant from the Tennessee, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency for forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
All right. Any discussion? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen thirty-five, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen thirty-six. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Premier Leasing Incorporated. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Mr. Dwight Jones, the second. Property Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones? I'm sorry, Ford?
Either one of us, both of us are well-versed on this issue. We've voted on this, this is the third time we've voted on this today. This is the actual lease between us and Premier for the new fire emergency center on Downs Boulevard, the LoJack Building. We voted on the operational costs. We voted to fund the project, and this now enters us into that lease agreement.
All right. Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Jones? All right, very good. We ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen thirty-six, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen thirty-seven. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into a license agreement with the Fairview Lions Club. Commissioner Jones?
Second.
And Commissioner Jones, Ricky Jones, the second. Property Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Parks and Rec Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Explanation?
Budget Committee also voted on this, five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee, all right, thank you.
This is some of our property that the Lions Club out there wants to make some improvements on. They're going to do the grading and take care of everything. And this just allows them to do that, no cost to us.
All right. Dwight, you good?
I'm great.
Any other discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen thirty-seven, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Bob? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven fourteen thirty-eight. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into interlocal agreement between Williamson County, Tennessee, and the city of Fairview for the provision of roadwork to municipal roads. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Ricky Jones, the second. Highway Commission, did they vote on it? Five, four, zero against, I'm sure. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation?
This is just a interlocal agreement, the same we have with Nolansville and Thompson Station, I believe.
All right. Any discussion? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven fourteen thirty-eight, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time.[1745.88] Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Oh, wait a minute.
Thank you.
Now, record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. Twenty-three, yes; zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 71439, resolution to express support for legislation that would amend Title 39, Chapter 17, Section 307d2 to delete the provision exempting Williamson County from the affirmative defense for obstructing highways. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Green the second. Did that go through Budget?
Yes.
All right.
Five-four-zero against.
Okay. Explanation, Commissioner Little and Green?
This is a first step in a process. We've had issues in our area of roadblocks at certain intersections, and this is a first step in a process towards us being able to regulate how those roadblocks are done.
All right. Mr. Green, you want...
No, as Tommy said, we have a lot of complaints because from a safety point of view and just an inconvenience point of view with people out in the road, I think these things need to be addressed, and this is the first step of getting the state to allow us to do that. So, thank you.
Any discussion? Let's see, who's number one? Commissioner Brockman?
Can you give me a little bit more clarification? What are we talking about?
Okay. Roadblocks is where they... A group of individuals stand out and have their buckets, and it may be for their ball team, it may be for the rescue squad, and they stand in an intersection and collect money.
Okay.
Right now, state law does not allow us to regulate that in any way, because we were... This is one step, and Bobby can address this better, but we are exempted. So therefore, we cannot regulate. We can't tell them if they can't, we can't tell them if they can. We don't want to stop it, we want to regulate. We have a lot of people from out of county having roadblocks there at this intersection.
So, it's not really roadblock, it's a asking for funding on the... In the middle of the road or on the side of the road. They're not blocking the road.
Correct. Well, they're stopping you to stop like...
Especially if it's a four-way stop.
So, it's... There, it's a four-way stop, and they have one person at each... And they stand in the middle of the road, not on the side of the road, with their buckets to collect funds, and it's called a roadblock. They don't physically block the road, but they are standing in the middle of the road.
And so, this will allow us to do what with those people who want to collect money for a...
This is the first step of the process. First, we have to get exempted. Right now, we are, I mean, unexempt. We are exempted from this, from obstructions. Once we get the state to unexempt us, then we can come back and look at some... The methods which, whether it be by permit or what we can do to regulate it. Right now, we can't do anything. So, this is the first step. Once we get this step done by the state, then we can go back at looking, seeing what can we do to help regulate this via permit, via whatever method we come up with to regulate how roadblocks are done.
Not that I'm thinking about being a protester in my second life, but just thinking about all the possibilities, okay.
Commissioner Danner?
You know, go ahead, Commissioner Green.
Commissioner, this is... In my own mind, it would be a no-cost permit, just so we know who's there, so they know what the regulations are. I don't want kids in the road collecting money, and that's my biggest issue.
Okay. Commissioner Danner?
Just to clarify, I just want to make sure that... So, the state, this is a resolution to express support for legislation. So, we have no power now, and we are gonna send a resolution to our state legislature saying, "We would like you to do this, to give us some control over this."
All right. The current legislature... Legislation on the books exempts us, so we're going to ask the state, our legislature, to revisit that resolution and remove our exemption from that resolution.
We need a new state law.
Or a change in the current state law.
Okay.
We are exempted from the current law.
Okay.
And are we not the only county that's exempted in the state?
I don't remember...
I think, seems like that's what I heard, so...
Yes. We are the only county in the state that was exempted, and nobody can tell us why.
Yeah.
Nobody remembers why.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you made my point. I just wanted to ask the question. Other counties have this disability. We do not. We're trying to bring us up to the same level as other counties, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnwell?
I was gonna make that comment about we're the only state that was exempted. For any county...
Quite frankly, I didn't think about that during reelections, just standing out there and fundraising. Would that work?
Right now, we can't stop you.
I'd probably get hit. Any other questions? I see none. You ready to vote? Resolution 71439, if you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes; zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 71440, resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into an inter-local agreement with the town of Nolansville for the exchange of geographic information. Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Green, second. Property Committee?
Six-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is just allows us to be able to share information with the town, the city of Nolansville.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 71440, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes; zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into an inter-local agreement with the city of Franklin and the city of Brentwood to establish a joint communications network committee. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little the second. Property Committee?
Six-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is just radio communication with the city of Franklin. Just 911. I think it's handheld radios. Would y'all like to address it anymore?
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, this question's prior to the mayor. Budget Committee meeting, does this agreement lock us into any money? I know you said that this is a potential cost of $15 million.
Well, I think the way I said it, Commissioner Barnwell, was that we asked for all capital requests come to us, and we had a $25 to $27 million capital, and 15 million of it came from emergency managers, 911. But the request, all you're doing with this agreement is authorizing us to get on the 800 megahertz that Franklin and Brentwood have got. We do not have the 800 megahertz. At some point, we're gonna have to make a commitment financially to integrate all of our systems throughout Williamson County and to address all of the issues that we have. But in this agreement, it is just sending a message to Brentwood and Franklin. We do want to play... We are hoping that at some point down the road, we can find the financial dollars in which to do this, to give this communication from public safety, the Sheriff's Department, and all... This in itself does have no money tied to it this year.
But the potential is $15 million.
I would say in the long run, it'll even be more than that as we develop here in Williamson County, but our commitment, the part they wanted over a long period of time, as it says today, is 15. It'll be more than that as we continue to develop in our community.
Any further discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 71441, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. John? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. Twenty-three, yes; zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into a long-term lease agreement with the state of Tennessee. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Dwight Jones the second. Property Committee?
Six-four-zero against.
Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We rent space in the basement of the historic courthouse for the public defender. This gives the ability for the county mayor to negotiate that lease for the term of her term, which is eight years.
Commissioner Jones, you got anything to add?
I'm just glad we leased out the basement.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just out of curiosity, mayor, does the lease payments go up as years go by?
Yes and no. When we started this lease arrangement three years ago, I think, as you know, many times the state dictates where they have to be in your community, and they weren't paying any rent. And so, through some efforts of the state legislators, we got them to ante up, and so they became part of our tenant arrangement that we have done in the historical courtroom. Unfortunately, this lease came... It's coming up in September of this year, and the legislators have already fulfilled their commitment for all funding for this coming year. So, we'll have to honor the lease, which is fine, to carry us through the next... Till we can get on their docket for next year. We have put in a... And don't hold my feet to this, Commissioner, but I think it's a 2 percent... No, it's a quarter per square foot each third year. They'll have to come up with that. So, we've got the funding mechanism in place that they will have to start paying a quarter more per square foot on the third year out, and in the next third year, then we have to start this whole process all over again.
Good news. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I see none. Ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 71442, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes; zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution to name a bridge located on Covington Udaley Road in honor of Clyde Lynch, Sr., for his many years of public service to Williamson County and its citizens. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval as amended.
Second.
Commissioner Hancock the second. Highway Commission, five-four-zero against?
As amended.
And Budget Committee?
Was five-four-zero against as amended.
All right. Judy, you want to make...
To offer the amendment, it was in the paperwork to replace the references of Covington Udaley Road with Arnold Road and replace the reference to McCrory Creek with Harpeth River.
All right. Proper motion, is there a second? Commissioner Green the second. Discussion, Commissioner Herbert?
I just wanted to thank Mayor Anderson and Diane Giddens and all the county commissioners. This makes me and my family so happy with this. My dad would be so honored to have this bridge named after him in this community that he grew up in and played and lived as a child, and... Because he loved this county commission. He loved trying to cut the budget, didn't he, Roger? So, he would be so happy. This is something that would mean so much to him, and I just want to thank all of y'all. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was not at a meeting where this resolution was... Had the opportunity to be signed, so I'd like to be officially added as a co-sponsor, please.
Okay.
Without objection from the other sponsors.
Yeah. If there's no objection from the other sponsors, we'll do that and just get with Jeff and sign it. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Discussion? I see none. And I'd also like to add, he was honored to serve with him, and I learned so much from him, and he's greatly missed.
My button is not working, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman. Requested speak button.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It was my privilege to sit beside Clyde Lynch and learn from him for many years, and it's a great deal of honor with which I bring this resolution along with all the rest of you. He had a lot that we could learn from and taught us so much, and it was with great sadness that we lost him, but I think this is an appropriate way to keep his memory alive, and I think he would be very, very happy. This was an area where he grew up and would be very familiar with. I would like to make one slight correction that I just caught today. In the third whereas, it was the Legends Award that he won from the Williamson County Franklin Chamber rather than Legacy. Just that for a typo. But it is my honor that we should do this, and I know that his family is very pleased too. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're voting on the amendment. Is it loaded, or we can voice vote this? It is loaded. We've got it loaded, so we'll vote it on the machine. All in favor of the amendment, push your yes button. We're changing the location. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes; zero, no.
All right. Now, we're back to the main, Resolution as amended, 71443. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 71443 as amended, push your yes button and confirm. Your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes; zero, no.
And if I may, I believe there's a ceremony scheduled August the 5th at 10:00 a.m. at the bridge. Everyone's encouraged to attend and hope to see you there. Late file, Resolution 71444, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into an agreement with the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Wilson the second. Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, this simply is the Department of Mental Health has agreed to do for the evaluation and treatment for our defendants that are charged with misdemeanors at a reduced rate.
Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 71444, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes; zero, no.
Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes a long day, and we... I just, from the bench, I want to thank everyone for serving with the commissioners that are retiring, and it's been a pleasure. Commissioner Herbert?[1752.25]